Okay, welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is May 23rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So everybody's aware, the meeting is being recorded via WCAT6, our local access network. It's also being recorded via Zoom and presented by Zoom and also livestreamed on Facebook. If anybody else is recording, please let us know so we can let the rest of the public know of your recording. Also, if anybody has anything to say in the meeting, please identify who you are and whether you're a resident or not, or your position with the town. That's a social media requirement that we have to do, okay? All right, first thing on the agenda is the Fire Chief Monthly Report and Ambulance Abatements for Third Quarter FY 2024, anticipated goal.
Evening, everybody.
Hey, Chief, how you doing?
Good evening, Admiral Boyfire Chief, thank you for having me tonight. Just want to thank the Board and Jim for being on the agenda first. I have another obligation this evening, so I appreciate switching things around for me just a little bit there. So, April of 2024, we responded to 50 fire-related calls, nine motor vehicle accidents, 13 medical assists, seven activated alarms, three investigations, six false alarms are canceled while en route or responding, three service calls, two vehicle fires, one had an intent call, four power line incidents, one carbon dioxide incident, and one illegal burn. Responded to 70 EMS calls in April, and where there were 18 ALS intercepts that were required for those calls. Conducted a few inspections, smoking carbon dioxide inspections, three BOs, one oil burner inspection, and one oil tank inspection, in between lots of other meetings and visits to our schools and other things that we do. We did not hold an EMS meeting due to some scheduling issues. All fire personnel continued our, continued training on our Engine 4, which is our newest truck that came in, still going through some drafting evolutions and different things to make sure all the drivers meet the minimum standards to drive that apparatus appropriately. And we also participated in fire extinguisher evolution, utilizing our training prop and our SHD, which is nice, we use a propane prop, there's some fire extinguishers, there's some special learning numbers coming on, and some of the members from our program on the state high school. Continue to watch the FY 24 budget closely. One of our full-time members is still out. We expect them to be returning hopefully very beginning of June, first couple of weeks of June, which will help us out tremendously. Watching the overtime line item, right now, I think it's sufficient funds in there to go get through the rest of the fiscal year. We've tried to, tried to invest as I can with that, and so far we've been successful with swapping some things around and, you know, within the budget where it needs to be. But also the Board and Administrator are well aware, we always try to do that in any shortfalls or anything.
Thank you, Chief. Do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you for everything you do. I see you hold it daily at the school, I appreciate.
No, we had a rock accident today, which was a little nerve wracking with the weather, but we got about, got off about 25 minutes late, but we got it in, and it was very successful, and the students had nothing but good things to say about it. Our students at the school do most of the work now in our program, which is really nice over the last couple of years, so they're, they're in there doing all the heavy lifting, and they're trained enough to do that, so it's, that program has just come a super long way. So, we're actually working with one of our local legislators to secure some, hopefully secure some more funding for that program going forward, waiting for a response from that, and a potential earmark that might come through at some point for maybe near the end of June, so, which would also help us with that program. And we are working with the superintendent to implement that EMT program he had mentioned once before, and we're kind of on the last portion of that, to try to get that program up and running at the school. We're just submitting an application to the Office of Emergency Medical Services to basically designate Quaybog as a training facility for the state of Massachusetts, which comes with a lot of paperwork, but it also comes with a lot of good things that, you know, once you get through that state, you have to have a medical director, it's very similar to, it's a very legit process. So, we're hoping to get that program up and running, maybe for the fall and September, and get some students into that, and kind of use maybe the juniors going into the EMT, excuse me, the juniors going into the fire program, and the seniors going into the EMT program, so that they are, they turn 18, once they finish the EMT program, they're able to test through the state. So, these types of initiatives, we're working on very hard, and we're partnering with the school, and so far it's been, it's been super beneficial for the whole department, so that's pretty cool. So, yeah, we did have that today, so I appreciate those comments.
Yeah, very good, thank you very much. One of my friends, his son goes to school, and for some time, for some time, the kid asked me a lot of questions about architecture because he wanted to study architecture, and then he says, "No, I'm going into the fire department."
Yeah, no, it's, like I said, it's grown leaps and bounds over the last, last few years especially, but this year, yet last year, this year, this is the first time, I mean, we have every day is a syllabus, you know, every single day is spelled out, professionally done, it's, it's, it's every day, we know exactly what we're teaching, who's teaching it, what we're doing and everything, so, you know, those first couple of years with COVID and everything, and trying to, well, you know, this, this, today we'll do this, and today we'll do that, everything is regimented now, it's a fully incorporated program, and it's, it makes so much easier for us to know exactly what everybody's doing every day. There's no second guessing, everyone knows exactly what their role is, and it's, it's been huge, and, you know, the, the students that are coming out of that, you know, like I said, last time we visited the Fire Academy, which I never thought would happen, you know, even the Fire Academy instructors, I mean, the students coming out of Quaybog in that program, they are far better trained than most of the recruits on any of the full-time fire departments around here, they'll tell you that, they can do gear races, they can, you know, use their SCBA, they, all the things they do, they do it 10 times better than even the full-time firefighters stuck in the program, because they've been through it, so it's, it's pretty neat.
Very good, Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, the abatements? Okay. All right, so we have January, we're looking for a total of $40,035.34. February, $41,373.51. And March was $63,333.97. Do you guys have any questions for Chief about this? I know it's tough to forgive in this debt, but...
Well, does it have to be forgiven? Like, what is...
Yes, so, so, what you're looking at right now, there's two types of write-offs or abatements that need to happen. One of them, like, you know, after I leave, I know that, you know, one of them was brought up in the recent audit that came through, and that's something that, you know, we're going to be addressing in the near future. There's basically two types of debt, so when you're talking about running an ambulance service, and I'm going to speak on this in very basic terms without getting into too much here, but there is stuff that you cannot legally collect, and there's stuff that you can try to legally collect. And what we're talking about for ambulance abatements, what we do quarterly, and what we are here tonight, are the things we cannot legally collect. So, again, if somebody is on Mass Health, or Medicare, or Medicaid, or something like that, and they have, they're on a federal or state program for their insurance, legally, we can only bill those types of insurances a certain amount. So, if we bill a $2,000 ambulance bill, they may be only required by state regulations or federal regulations to only pay 300 of that bill. We cannot leave that remaining balance out there and collecting over time. It has to be abated in some way. This is no, no, what we do here is no different than what Ware does, and Bomer does, and every other town that runs an ambulance service, this is, we're required to do checks and balances through accounting, through the treasurer's office, through the accountant's office, and we can't just leave money hanging out there. We can't legally collect it because they only have to pay a certain portion of it, so you have to write off that remaining balance. The other types of, of abatements that we have to do are what we call bad debt, or what we commonly refer to as bad debt, and those are your, we've exhausted all efforts to collect this, they're not responding to collection letters, you know. We have a couple of choices to do that, we can report them to Experian or other credit card type companies, but these types of bills, you can't attach to their liens of properties or anything like that. So, we do our best to collect those types of funds with letters, and, you know, you know, I don't want to see you use the word threatening, but, you know, trying to, trying to do our due diligence to make sure that we collect it, and, but unfortunately, there are some people that they just, they just won't pay. For whatever reason, a lot of them are not born people, these are people that we're coming in contact with for whatever reasons, in car accidents, the Mass Pike, or other places that we, our billing company has exhausted, you know, has gone to every effort over the last couple of years to get some sort of, you know, they've moved, they have 13 bad addresses that they, they can't seem to track the person down. So, at some point, we have to make the common sense decision to say, okay, we still have to account for this money, at some point, we have to write some of that stuff off, too. So, you know, there will be a point where I have to go through, and that was one of the recommendations on the audit, where we have, you know, a decent amount of outstanding debt over the last few years that we've tried to collect, but unfortunately, just haven't been able to for multiple types of reasons. And again, this is not that, this is something that every, every town deals with, with regard to how, you know, when you, when you run a municipal ambulance service, so, and even a private ambulance service, you still have to deal with insurance companies, and that's what it is. So, whether you're a top-tier insurance carrier such as Fallon, or Harvard Pilgrim, or Blue Cross, or Blue Shield, we may capture 90 to 100% of what we bill out from a top-tier insurance, you know, provider, and the, the patient may only be left to pay the copay, you know, it could be $100 out of the $2,000 bill, and many times they pay it, you know, most of the time, I would say they do. But if they choose not to for whatever, they can apply for hardship, they can, you know, if there's a reason they can't do it for whatever reason, we still have to account for that money at the end of the day.
Anticipated goal on that?
What do we have to accept these? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance abatements for third quarter FY 24.
Second. Bone fever?
Richi hacker, aye.
Benny Welly's, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Chief. One thing I would say is that, if you've noticed over the last few years, you know, the numbers that you see on these types of reports, they grow, they get bigger, okay? When we, years ago, we used to say 20,000, 18,000, 70,000, but the reality is, is that it's all relative because our call volume has gone up so much that they're, we're doing so many more calls, they're billing out so many more patients, that's why these numbers are going up. So, we're still collecting the same percentages per se based on what we're billing out, it's just that the call volume and the amount of activity that we do has gone up here, so these numbers have also written, you know, gone up because we're required to write that remainder off. So, that's why over the years, if you look at these, in the, you know, 12 years that I've been submitting these to the Board, you know, you'll see it, it used to be, you know, 10,000, 15,000, and now we're up to averages of 40, 50, and 60,000 a month because that's where our call volume is, and that's the amount that they're billing out each month, so...
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is Rosell Clark and Associates' presentation on the FY 23 financial audit, and I believe they are available via Zoom.
I need a, which one is it?
He's on there.
He's on there.
I know, but weren't, didn't you send me something to present?
No, he's going to present it.
Oh, he's going to present?
Let him share the screen.
All right, I thought I was...
How you doing tonight, sir?
All right, you can share.
All right, is that up on your end?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks, guys. My name is Tony Roselli, and I am the managing partner for Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates. We actually did your annual audit in, for 2023, this was the first year that, that we had done the Town of Warren audit, and it went relatively well. You'll see a bunch of, you know, observations in my report, which I've got on, up on the screen, I've got about 14 bullet points I want to go through, and this would have been the, the letter that hopefully Jim had sent out to you folks, it's the back end of the letter, and there's about 14 items that I'd love to go through, some are just informational items, some are things you, you need to work on and fix, some are optional, you've got to go through a cost benefit type of thing and say, hey, do we want to do that or not? But overall, it was a very clean process. My staff did not communicate to me that there were any problems with your staff, so that went really well, all the information was provided when we asked for it, there were no delays, and, yeah, overall, it was a really good, good audit, and I was surprised for some of the things that I reviewed and looked at, which I'll communicate, surprised in a good way, that I'll communicate to you as we go through this process. So, so up on the screen, we'll go through these 14 bullets. The first thing I noticed when I picked up this audit to review was that you folks have $4.3 million in reserves, and, and I thought that was quite extraordinary for a town of the size of Warren, and then I immediately went to look at your bond rating, and I saw that you're just a single A bond rating, and I'm like, well, there's a, there's a big disconnect there, what's, what's happening? And I saw that your bond rating was being done by Moody's. So, I kind of, I took a look at that, I looked at some of your other things, like your liquidity, your debt profile, I looked at a few other things to see why would that bond rating get dragged down, and I really, nothing really jumped out. So, what I suggested is, the next time you do a bond rating, what you may want to consider is using the Standard and Poor Bond Rating, folks. Their more, their metrics are more suitable for a smaller town, whereas Moody's metrics suit something like a Boston, or Worcester, or Cambridge, it's for bigger towns with big equalized valuation, so it kind of penalizes small towns like, like Warren, so I thought I'd, I'd put this in there because this is something that if you do start to take on some projects and start to have, take on debt, this will save you interest expense by having a better bond rating, so I thought it was important to at least mention this, and then, and then you folks can talk to UniBank, or whoever handles your, your debt, and see if that can be accommodated the next time around. Any questions on that?
No, no, very good idea, thank you very much, anything we can do to save the town life.
No, it's, like I, like I said, there was a disconnect there. Most towns that are in this reserve position are at least in the double A category, at least in the low double A, this actually might be a high double A, but we won't find out unless we, you know, make that move. There's a couple of things that do relate to this, but we'll discuss them later in item nine and 10, that will also impact the bond rating, where I did see a little bit of weaknesses that if we do decide to say, let's do some debt, let's use S&amp;P, these are a couple of things we can work on to even make it better. So, so, good job having the reserves, I mean, that's, let me not overlook that, just the fact that you have reserves. As soon as I saw that, I said, this is a well-managed, well-run community to have developed, you know, and, and accumulated those sorts of reserves, and for the folks at home, the reserves are basically stabilization, and you're free cash, you're undesignated, it's, it's, it's built up for reasons, it's built up for things that, like, for example, the pandemic happened, and the town probably, other than having to close, show off, and go remote for a little bit, financially, it doesn't look like you missed a beat because you had some reserves to help bolster, you know, and get through those, those, those problems and challenges with the pandemic. And, and we've had some downturns about 15 years ago, there was a great recession when the entire financial economy collapsed, and the state wasn't bringing in as much money, and it trickled down to the town, so the, these reserves are necessary going forward, and they're, they're very good for your bond ratings, like I said, and, and also, you may want to start, like I said, in this comment, I said, to address the OPEB liabilities, which is something you can maybe use some of these reserves for, but we can talk about that as we move down. Next, pretty important, pretty important topic on interest rates, the FOMC, so inflation, as you're all aware, has skyrocketed. The FOMC, in an attempt to bring it under control and bring that inflation down, has increased, increased the borrowing rates in the country. What that, what that has done is that has also impacted the amount of money you can earn on your bank accounts, and the town looks like they've taken advantage of that because you've earned about $100,000 more in interest income in the general fund in this particular year than you did in the year before. So, so that was nice that you, that you placed money in the correct places to earn those extra funds, so you've used your cash, your excess cash as a revenue-producing asset, which is always great, and it also helps to build on those reserves, because generally, when you're budgeting, it's difficult to budget how much interest you're going to make, so a lot of towns usually make that number very low, just in case something happens, and, and you don't earn that interest, it's a very, you know, it's, it's, it's a question whether you're going to earn X amount or X amount, so you don't like to hide code a number into your budget as, as a reliable source of revenue. So, what happens is, when it comes in over forecast, it ends up helping out your reserve process, so, so good job with that, and just continue to look at that, so if the treasurer is listening or has already read this, nice work, but look for other opportunities, too, to keep, keep that, keep the coffers, you know, earning interest, and it's, it's a nice little thing to have at the end of the day, because when you go out to borrow, they're going to want the interest expense side that's gone crazy, so, 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 good, good, good work there. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next is... Next, this is just a reminder type of thing, and this is, I don't know if you folks have heard what's going on in, in Orange, Mass, you know, there was a significant amount of money stolen, and so we're always looking, these next two bullet points, you know, what can you do, what controls are in place? Number three is cybersecurity, okay? What, what do we do off the cybersecurity? We should be training employees, we should be doing phishing, simulations, seeing where the vulnerabilities are, who's clicking on emails they shouldn't be doing. From what I understand, this is being done, but just continue to remain vigilant on that because the last thing you want, and it's unfortunately happened to some towns, where I had this reminder in there, and then I'll be eating dinner and watching Fox News, and I'll see one of my towns on TV under a ransomware attack, you know, that they're, they're locked down, they got to close down the schools, and, and the, the cyber hack has won, you know, $100,000 or something crazy to unlock the data, and, and it can tie up your system for a while, so I always put this in as an informational reminder to just, you know, make, make sure that your cybersecurity is under control, make sure your operations are solid, and make sure you train your employees. The second area, just in the fraud prevention area, so just your cash handling functions that are outside of the treasurer collector's office should really have good controls in place. How quickly are they required to turn over funds? Where do they keep the funds prior to turning them over? Do they keep, do they do checks and balances in their own little departments, like the town clerk, for example? Do, do we, do they have to keep a receipt book that they balance to their cash collected? Those are the sorts of things that typically the town accountant or the treasurer will do these rolling audits of these, of these departments that handle cash, they're usually unannounced, so you kind of go in and say, hey, let's, let's do an audit of the cash handling process, and it's not to pick anyone out or that you think you're doing anything fraudulent, but it's just a good control to have to help prevent those sorts of things that, that do unfortunately happen. Any questions on those two items? Okay.
No.
Next is just a reminder on ARPA, your funds have to be legally committed by December 31st of this year, or you're going to have to give them back, and by legally committed, it can't just be like a selectment, you know, here's our plan, or here's, here's what we think we're going to do, it has to be PO, contract, something that's really solid, that's what the feds are looking for. You do have until December 31st of '26 to spend it, so if you have a plan in place, some sort of construction, get a contract in place, they have until '26 to actually do the project, and we, we will be looking for that as we're doing your audits for fiscal '24 and '25.
We've committed all our funds, it's all set now, so we're good.
Okay, super, super. I hate not to have this in as a reminder because they'll say, hey, you never told us, but it sounds like you guys are on the ball. Next, I caught the back end of the ambulance discussion, I saw that, that the balances have increased, the greater than 180-day aging categories increased, this is, like your Fire Chief said, something that's normal in the business. Some of these third parties are difficult to collect from, and sometimes it takes a year, year and a half to collect the money. My comment here was, hey, just take a look at it, see what's there. I've had some towns kind of ignore this for a long time, and then they'll go in and they'll find out that the people have died, they've passed away, they've moved, you can't find them again, they're in nursing homes, so, so I just ask that, you, you, you kind of manage the receivables, and if there is something that there's no way you can collect it, then, then you basically just write it off, and I think that's what was being done at the beginning of the meeting tonight, so it sounds like that is being taken care of. In the treasurer collector's office, love to see a cash forecast being done, so basically, here's my starting cash, here's what I expect from revenues, and here's what I expect from expenses, what's my ending cash, and we do it monthly. If you do a 12-month forecast, it can kind of tell you how much money you'll always have at the end of the month, and then that will help you invest that money so that you can maximize your interest, because you don't want to invest money that you're going to need to pay salaries and, and your operating costs, but if you do a cash forecast, you can see, hey, I always have $1 million at the end of the day, or $2 million at the end of, end of the day. I can invest that in, in the MDT, a CD, or a T-belt, you're allowed to do anything with maturities 12 months or less in the general fund, so, again, just another little tool for the treasurer collector's office to, to help maximize some of your investment returns. Next is capital assets, so the list we got from the prior accountant was, was very old, it looked like it would, had been created like back in 2004 or '05, and then it was just kind of updated for anything you bought, but it didn't take into account anything that had been disposed of, you know, put out to pasture, you know, traded in, so I had made, made a recommendation to the, the town accountant, take the inventory list, just go to the department heads and say, hey, do we still have this 2002, you know, lawnmower or, or whatever, and just kind of clean up the list a little bit, I'm sure a lot of the older stuff is probably out of service at this point. And, and I do have those lists, Jim, if the accountant needs them, I don't know if the prior CPA was, was giving you those lists, so I can send that over to the town accountant if needed.
Please, please.
Okay, super. Next is something that if you do, and this is good to have anyway, really good business practice, is basically a internal control policy and procedure manual that also has financial policies. The bond rating, folks, are going to be looking for this if you do what we talked about in that first comment, so this is something you should have on hand, something that makes sense for the Town of Warren, something that you can, can follow when people leave, you don't want them, someone coming in, like, say, the accountant leaves or the treasurer leaves, you want them to have a manual that says, okay, here's the process... You want them to have a manual that says, okay, here's the process, so that they're not guessing what the process is in Warren. And I have some, like I said, some, I have some samples of these from other towns that I can pass along to you, Jim, that you can take a look at, and you can cut and paste what makes sense. That way, you're not starting with a blank piece of paper. Say, yeah, that one makes sense for Warren, that one makes sense. This one in Winchester might not make sense for Warren because Winchester's a bigger place. So I can send that over to, and maybe make this like a 2024-type of, you know, goal to accomplish. OPEB, looks like you've done something with this. So up through '23, and the reason I had this in as a different comment, and then Jim pointed out to me that in '24 and scheduled for '25, that you're doing some funding. But there had been no funding to OPEB. So I think this is a really important step. The population is getting older, good news for old guys like us, but bad news for the town, you know? So we may live into our 90s, but the town now, whereas maybe 25 years ago, I think the average age for a male might have been 76 or 77, now you've had a 10 years of insurance payments that you have to make for that individual. So what happens is your aging population, your retiree population is expanding, and that number becomes bigger and bigger. So then in about 10 years, that's going to be a fairly large number. So putting money away now is very prudent. And then at some point down the road, when the county pension system becomes fully funded, you can divert those funds to make more contributions to OPEB. But I was happy to see that this got done after the end of the year. The 32B was adopted, and you started making these $25,000 contributions. Not a lot of money, but philosophically, it's really good. So that management that comes in and replaces you folks knows that there's something in place, something that they can look at and work on. Okay. Next, and a lot of this stuff, like the next couple, this is what new eyes, when you have a new accounting firm, this is what, these are the sorts of new things that a firm that's done your books for 10 or 12 years might not see these things as quickly because it's already in their work papers, so they kind of, you know, move over. So it's always nice to have a new set of eyes. I mean, not that they were doing anything wrong, but, you know, we went through your special revenue accounts, and we found 25 stale accounts that haven't been used in a couple of years, about $70,000. So basically, I explained to Jim, have your accountant, or you, or someone, sit down with the department heads and say, hey, you've got these gifts, you've got these grants. You're always looking for money when we're doing the budget, but here you have money that you haven't spent. So make a nice list of what department belongs to what, and they can actually start using those in their, you know, to spend on something that, you know, a piece of capital, equipment for their office or something. So there's about $70,000 in 25 stale special revenue accounts, and there was two minor capital project balances that were about $6,300. You can repurpose those, or you can use those to pay down debt. So you can actually use those in your next budget and just use it to pay down debt. So there's a couple of different uses of those. But those were just projects that ended, you didn't use all the money, and it's just been kind of sitting there, so that's $6,300. So.
Now, with that one, I actually have a question. We can actually use that money to pay down our debt?
Yeah, up to $50,000 a year.
Even though it's like their grants and stuff?
Yeah, what you would do is at the next town meeting, you would appropriate that as a transfer to the general fund, and then that could be used against the debt budget. Because initially, when you had set up this capital project, most likely it was from debt from years ago, and the project got completed, and it just, basically, the rest of the money just sat there. If it was from free cash that you did that, which I didn't, it didn't look like it was free cash to me, but if you set it up by free cash, you could simply just do a repurpose of that or a transfer back to the general fund through a town meeting vote.
Okay.
Tony, just for clarification, that's not any excess in grants. That's just for articles, correct?
No, yeah, the articles, so in your capital projects, and I can't recall what these were, maybe some sort of a, maybe some sort of a building or something, or some sort of construction project that you might have done, like say, five or seven years ago. You went out, you borrowed some money, you spent everything except the $6,300. The $6,300, from what I can tell, has been sitting there for a while. So rather than let it sit there till eternity, the Department of Revenue has allowed you to use that $6,300, either to go back and pay off debt, or to repurpose it to some other capital project. So that's not the grants and gifts, that's different.
Yeah, okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. If you have any questions on that, when you're putting your town meeting stuff together, just give me a holler, Jim, and we'll go through it. Next item is your withholding accounts. So your withholding accounts, basically, when someone gets their paycheck, a certain amount comes out to pay the federal tax, the state tax, the pension, the Medicare, and health insurance is a big piece of it, dental health insurance, life insurance. All this comes out of the pay. When the bill comes, okay, the town has a certain piece it pays, and a piece of it comes out of this account where you're taking it out of the employee's pay. So you take some from the town, and you take some from the employee, and you pay the bill. So what we saw then, the health insurance withholding account has over $50,000 right now. So at some point, some miscoding issue happened, where either the town paid for the whole thing, and it didn't come from the employee's little fund, or you just overcollected it from the employees, one or the other. But there's $50,000 in that fund that, to me, does not appear to be the correct amount. So I put in here a comment to investigate that. It could be an extra $50,000 coming back to the general fund if it's proven that somehow it was coded incorrectly when you paid one or two of your bills. So those last couple of comments, there's a few dollars there. With a little bit of research, there's a few dollars there that the town can go back and get. The next, the next two relate to revenue also. So we're raining dollars here, which is good. So the town, or any vendor, any individual, if I write a check and the person never cashes it, that means the money's in my bag, they never took it. So the town does multiple check runs every year. And what you should be doing is looking at the checks that have not cleared. So the individuals did not cash those checks, those are still sitting there. You should do that particular process once a year. And you take that list, so say there's 20 checks that never got cash, you take that list, and what you do is you advertise it in the local newspaper, and then you put them on the website, on your website, and under old checks. If they're not claimed within a year, the town gets to keep that money as income. So the goal is to return it to the people that really, you know, got the check, you know, were written the checks and just forgot about it, lost it. But more often than not, a check from 2006 is never claimed. So the town ends up picking that up as income. And there's quite a bit of those. The treasury just needs to go through that list and do what's called an abandoned property process. So that's something I thought I would bring up. And then item 14 relates to the same thing. At some point, the town did do that process. They had $4,000 that they put into a liability account, waiting for people to claim. That $4,000 has been sitting there forever, and nobody's claimed it. So the town can now bring that into income. You can just make an entry and bring that right into income. You don't have to do anything else with that $4,000. And I think that is it, but just overall, this is all what I call some low-hanging fruit, easy things to fix. Overall, the controls are very good, the process was very efficient. Everyone we worked with was very helpful. It was a very good audit, I was happy that we had taken on this account, and, you know, happy to be your auditor. And the goal is to take these 13 or 14 items and knock it down to like four or five, and knock it down to nothing, you know, the year after. So it's a little process that you go through.
Well, very good, thank you very much. Thank you. It's actually good to hear that we have money out there that we're not really paying attention to, and that, nothing that we owe anybody, but money that's sitting there that we can grab at some point. That's actually very good news. Thank you very much for that. Do you guys have any questions?
I do not.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir, very clear, very good, appreciate your input.
Ray, do you have anything? No? Mr. Farrar?
No.
Kerry?
No.
Yeah? All right, sounds like everybody's very happy with this report. You did a really good job, and thank you for finding some more money for us, and we'll definitely do our due diligence to go recover that money.
Yeah, try to spend some of it, break some stimulus.
No, no, we want to save.
Want to save it, yeah, or put it into your OPEB.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's right, OPEB. Yeah.
But yeah, just be careful on the grant and gift money because that's for specific purposes, so kind of look at what that was for. The police get a lot of these types of things, the fire, the public works. What happens is, you replace police cheese, you replace public works people. The next heads of the departments that come in, they're not made aware of what was there, they don't know it's there, and it kind of gets forgotten. So it's important for the town accountant to really go through now that you've got so many. And this 25 isn't that bad. You just go through them and say, hey, what is available, what can we spend it on? And in the end of the day, it's always a good thing, so hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to report back to Tony that I did have a department head meeting with the finance team, Kerry, Dawn, Jackie, myself. And now that we'll have some assessors, they'll be included as well. And we assigned some tasks to address some of these issues already. So some of these items are currently under works, and will be addressed by the team. And I'm really proud of the team for all the hard work that they did to produce this very successful audit, so thank you, Tony.
Very good. You guys have any? Go ahead, sir.
I was going to say thank you. If no one has any other questions, thank you. We'll see you next year, and have a great holiday weekend.
Well, thank you very much. You gave us our homework, and we'll make sure we get it done before next year.
Okay, super, thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
See you later.
Okay, that was actually very good news. All right, next thing on the agenda is discussion on a cannabis cultivation facility on Little Rest Road. Gentlemen, I assume that's you guys, right?
I need to join in later, I'd like to go over to Warren.
Oh, very good.
I intend to stay.
So we're looking at, you guys are planning on doing a marijuana growth facility over at 818 Little Rest Road?
Correct.
So you have that, your mailing address is in Brentfield?
Yes, we're about a thousand feet from town line.
So you're right on the town line?
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, in a situation like this, we look at, you know, host agreements. And that was something that we brought up, and we did some research into it. And I don't know, are we going to entertain a host agreement, are we going to pass on this one? What do you guys think?
They're very difficult to deal with now, but.
They are.
I don't know, we've never really done one, so I don't know.
We've done them before, but now they're very stringent, and the state kind of really controls it. And at this point, we'd have to show how their facility is impacting the community and costing us money to get, basically, revenue from them to cover that, those, I don't want to say damages, but that increased cost incurred. So that's where that would happen.
Right.
But they're very difficult to identify on how that would impact, if it does in any way. And, you know, speaking and doing some research with Mr. Farrar, it appears that it'd probably be best to have any issues or concerns with this would be addressed by the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, they've got to get their project before we can even start talking about it.
Right. So, and at this point, we're just going to, you know, table the host agreement unless we see an impact, and then we may, we may bring it up again.
Fair enough.
But if there's no impact, it might not even be an issue.
All organic is Rogers Farms.
Well, is it all marijuana-organic?
What's that?
Is it all marijuana-organic?
No, a lot of those are ground salts, sort of like farmland. Like Rogers Farms in Warren, he's a no-till-all-organic farm. It's hardly any impact to the environment, it's all natural, the earth does the work. Sun grown, higher quality.
So do you guys have any questions?
No, sir.
So at this point, we're not going to make a vote on it, we're just going to table it. If we see an impact, come forward through the planning board discussions and what they resolve, then it may come back again to be addressed.
Sounds fair.
Okay, and great to have your business.
Thank you.
I don't take in the product, but I'm sure you sell good stuff or have good stuff, so. My job doesn't allow me to do it, so.
The Massachusetts recreational industry is kind of a joke. We'd like to help change that.
Very good, all right, you good?
Yep.
Did you have anything for us, Joe?
No, if we skip the host agreement, we just sign the waiver, is that how it goes?
No, we're just not going to exercise our right.
Oh, okay, because I believe the state wants either a signed version of the host agreement or a waiver that says they, you know.
For your licensing?
Yes, for the licensing, that says that you can take the same amount of taxes you take from every other business in Warren, plus the 3% that the state allows you to take.
So we haven't had a lot of grow facilities interested in Warren.
Yeah.
And, you know, since the last one we've had, the laws have changed a lot. So we'd have to do some research on it and see exactly what it is. We don't want to hold you up on your licensing. So if at some point you see something and say, hey, I need to get an answer from this, guys, then you can definitely reach out to us, and we can, you know, come to a, you know, an opinion on that. But right now, we're not going to do that. We're going to let the planning board play out and do their part.
Yep.
And you do your part, and then, you know, we'll see where it goes from there.
Sounds good.
All right?
All right, thank you.
So just to be clear, there's been no determination made on the host community agreement? No determination?
Right.
There may be in the future.
There may be.
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. If you want to hang out for the rest of the meeting, you can hang out for.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we go from. as we go from here, um, as I start to apply to the state, do I need to make more, um, do I come, need to come to more town meetings? Do, is there other things we need to discuss?
Well, it's always good when it comes to town meetings.
Well, yeah, that I can do.
Yeah, they're always great to have, but, you know, if you have things that are concerning and you wanna bring things forward to us, um, you could ask, be put on agenda and we can discuss those with you. Um, or if you have like a, a small concern, you could always reach out to the town administrator, Mr. Farrar, um, and he might be able to address it for you. Um, and if it requires a vote, then we'd have to put it on an agenda.
Okay.
To, to vote on that item, uh, because we are a board. We have to vote. Okay? Um, but yeah, and we welcome your participation in any capacity with the town.
Thank you.
So, you're resident.
Contributing.
And you're contributing. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Any other questions, sir?
You do have a scheduled special permit hearing in front of the planning board on June tenth.
On June tenth?
You know that, right?
Um, actually, I did not.
Okay.
That's your next big step is the planning.
Yes, the planning board, yeah.
You've gotta get your special permit, your site plan.
Yep.
Approved, you know, that sort of stuff.
Yes. Same time, six o'clock?
Sorry?
Starts at the same time, six?
Uh, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, okay.
On Monday.
Ten.
Ten.
All right. We'll see you gentlemen then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, next thing on the agenda is emergency, emergency management monthly report. How are you doing, Mr. McKeon?
Very good. Busy.
Yeah. Do you even have any time to sleep anymore?
Yeah, I would. Okay. Um, Jim McKeon, emergency management director, here with my April on the board. April seventh, we did the monthly sire test. April sixteenth, um, we got Maine Emergency Management, State of Maine. They offered a, um, best practices, you know, course on running cooling and heating centers. It was a virtual course. We built a group of a squash. We all received this and after it, basically good, uh, information on, uh, tips and best practices on the cooling centers that we do at the senior center. So, that will help out in the future. Um, April seventeenth, um, I attended a incident action plan workshop. This helped identify the action plan, benefits of it. We reviewed how to write an action plan. Basically, this is, uh, for our frains, fairs, public events. There's different I C S boards that you can write out all the different plans and everyone will have the same page to it. So, working on getting trained in that, how to implement that in coming on.
I C S and incident command system?
Yeah, incident commands. April twenty-fifth, we did another virtual training course on, uh, functional needs during running shelter and operations. Basically focusing on, uh, special, special means that would be required by certain. Also, that training, we just wanna mention, uh, the internet connection. We added stairs, lost right on the end of it. Just our connection.
It's something we're gonna have to address here in the very near future. Especially the upgrades and the phones.
Yep. Uh, then Nima had provided, uh, thirty-five, uh, emergency guidebooks on the chemicals. These come out every four years. It helps first responders look up the chemical properties, dangers of the chemical, uh, so they can make the best decision to save people back, back to the areas. Nima gives me some copies out of, yeah, I got thirty-five of them. Uh, for fire, police, highway, sewer, water, emergency. April twenty-seventh, um, we will put on a cert rodeo at the senior college. Uh, this event is all the different organizations volunteering such as Mendel Core, Red Cross, you know, other cert, which are all over Massachusetts. Um, we pump the train and then work together. This is an annual event. They try it every spring. It's got a third morning. We, we didn't go to the last two. This is the first one we attended all day. It's an all-day course. About a hundred, hundred different people. In that, we trained, uh, on traffic control, incident safety. Those are two, uh, courses focused on technique and, uh, and then we also have, I think, a little student. Mentioned, uh, the, uh, we are accounting update to, and here's sixty volunteers, about forty-five bags of trash, police department assisted, and manager assisted. Good for our residents in the day and time. But, with my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Keep it busy.
Yes.
Not that you have much time to do anything else, huh? Very busy, man.
No, just, uh, it's good to hear about all the trainings. That's awesome.
Yeah, this is my focus as well.
Great.
If you ever feel like you can't anymore, ask for help. Okay? Don't hesitate for that. Yeah. So, he has a big team.
Very good advice.
A big family in town. You know, so, don't feel pressured. And we, we know you do a lot of stuff. We, we know you're capable, but at some point, reach for help.
Absolutely.
We are all open to help.
When you need a break. Call Dan. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else, Dan?
Um, just maybe one. I love a little more of the day parade in a bit.
Right.
Uh, so it's gonna be on Sunday. Um, we're gonna come from the, the start, start the center area, both of these areas. They'll come down Maple Street to the center of Warren. Uh, during that time around Maple Street, Maple Street will be closed off. From the other pass to, on, uh, the parade. Once they get downtown, um, they're gonna block off one section on the other pass so they can leave, not come into town, the other pass on the floor, our park here. Uh, we're gonna have volunteers and they're gonna, uh, directly sign. And they're gonna go with the fire station, that should probably about one forty-five, two o'clock. And you down to West Warren, uh, you're gonna leave by the senior center. Go up to, back to the park, we'll grade your service there.
Some other type of sandwiches, things like that.
Hot dogs, crackers. So, there will be some tours through each parade. Patient. The West Warren area, we're gonna get people going around, uh, Chapel North Street. And with, uh, if, if, he's not parked, there are cars on the road that afternoon. It'll help out. Um, because we have a lot of traffic, traffic going through there.
Nothing during the parade and the parade's moving through. There's no traffic through that area.
Yes.
Just around.
Yeah.
Or is Chapel, uh, rounding.
Yep. Main Street's gonna be shut off. Most of the road will be closed.
But how long is the parade gonna be? I mean, it's not a long time that things are gonna be shut down, right?
Be a couple hours, two hours. Well, the actual parade in the area, it's because it's section.
So, Warren will be affected probably from one to two.
Okay, West Warren will be affected from two to three. About five o'clock. And, um, are we gonna put the sign boards up? You know, are we gonna be able to do the second side board yet?
We're working on getting registration.
There was a, uh, holdup at the registry that we need to provide additional documentation. I think Dan's getting it for us. Sorry. Oh, he's got it.
I got it. I'll attempt to, uh, work on it tomorrow, see. If I get that done, we can get the side board out.
It'd be nice to get both side boards up.
Hey, Paul, it's come to Bill. I guess we're gonna put it on.
There we go. Now, they're playing. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Nothing else?
That's all I have.
Right. And just so everybody knows, remembers, our Memorial Day Parade is this Sunday and, um, I hope to see everybody there. I know I'll be there. You gonna be there? All right. You gonna be there?
Seventy-five degrees.
All right. Mr. Farrar's gonna be there?
Yes.
Oh, I've got eighty-one.
No, the temperature's supposed to go down.
Yeah. It says eighty-one.
Updated. It's going down a little bit. All right. But Monday, it's supposed to be raining.
Yep. Yes, indeed.
Sunday, it's supposed to be like a little overcast, but in the seventies. Yeah. So, beautiful day for a parade.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next thing on the agenda, um, discussion on reorganization of the select board. Okay. It's that time of year again. I don't know. What do you wanna do? I'm good with the way it stays. I don't know. It's been working unless you wanna reorganize.
I don't know. What do you think?
I propose to have Mr. Belize to be the clerk.
Okay. I can support that.
Cause Derek, it is Derek's turn if he wants it, right? This, this is your last.
That's my last.
Of the three years. You're on year three, so.
What do you mean last three years?
Well, no, he's, well, three-year term. He's in his last year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, he would be the elder.
The senior.
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 You're gonna have.
The one with all the wisdom. Right?
He's full of wisdom.
I don't know. I talk too much.
What do you wanna do? Change or stay? We can't sit here and all just look at each other.
Flip a coin.
Well, we're still debating here. We're trying to figure out the.
I'll, I'll do whatever you guys want to.
It's, it's coming up to you.
Yeah, sure.
You wanna reorganize?
As long as I don't read the, uh.
You gotta read this stuff.
That's fine.
So, you wanna be chair?
Yeah, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right.
Do you wanna be vice? Well, you're already vice chair.
Yeah, I mean, I'm the junior now, so if you wanna.
He's the clerk.
Yeah, I would be the clerk if we went by the normal.
Okay.
Cause you're second now.
Okay.
Right? He's the last term. You're up for reelection next year and I just got reelected, so.
So, you get to read the warrants, right? Cause that, that's what I don't wanna do. I don't wanna read the warrants.
Well, you gotta read warrants.
Well, anybody could do that.
Yeah.
Well, you assign them.
Okay. That's fine.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll do a motion to, um, have Mr. Belize as the chair for the select board.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
Okay. Derek's the chair. All right. Now, vice chair.
So, I'll make a motion to make David Dufresne vice chair.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. And.
I get what, I get what's left over.
Mr. Ihocker, I'll make a motion for Mr. Ihocker to be the clerk of what is selectment.
Yeah, we'll need a longer cable.
Second? We can stay there.
Yeah, we can just.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. All right. I'm moving my desk now. Everyone's speaking nervously.
I have a question. I have the minutes already done as Derek's signing as clerk.
You gotta change them.
Okay, I gotta change it. That was my question.
Oh, I get to sign minutes now.
There you go, sir.
I don't know, sign any minutes anymore?
No, he does.
Thank you, sir. And is this one mine or yours?
That was mine.
Nope, that was yours.
I don't know.
All right.
Here's another one.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I got the C P G.
Right. This is gonna be weird. No, you're so far away now.
No.
You're so close.
I'm gonna start sending the emails or something.
It does look familiar, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I feel like we've been on another board this way. No, it can't be that.
Okay, so, having done the, um, reorganization, Ray, you had something to say?
I could address comments now or I could do it during comments time. Your discretion.
Okay, so, if it's okay, we'll leave it for the comments?
Sure.
Okay, so next in our agenda, we have the discussion on employee evaluation done by the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just as a housekeeping matter, um, you know, we're in the process of scheduling, uh, employee evaluations, uh, which are gonna be starting next week. Um, and as, uh, past practice last year, uh, we had, uh, either the chairman or the chairman's designee, uh, from the board, uh, participate, uh, in the, in the evaluation process for employees under the Board of Selectment. So, um, just for scheduling purposes, for housekeeping purposes, um, you know, we're, we're, we're asking that if you could, uh, potentially coordinate, um, you know, uh, with scheduling, uh, with Karen, uh, so that, um, so that, um, um, you know, we could, you know, ha- have time slots available for whoever is assigned to that, that, that role, um, for evaluations.
Just like we did last year, right?
Right.
We run all this. Okay. Do we have any changes or anything?
So, I, I'm not sure, you know, if, if the chair or if you, if you're, if you're not, you know, if you wanna designate somebody else to do it, um.
Did we, did the chair designated somebody else as you?
No.
No, no.
Do you guys wanna designate somebody? Do we designate somebody?
Designate the chair.
Yeah. That's an option.
It's really, it's really the chair's kind of responsibility to oversee.
Sure.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, as long as I don't read the warrants, I'm okay with that.
So, Derek, then you need to get with me and let me know when you're available so I can schedule all the people that you need to meet with.
Okay, no problem.
And so, uh, uh, our plan is to, uh, meet a half hour before, um, the, the actual evaluation.
Right.
Okay. We can do that in the mornings, almost every day.
Thank you.
So the next we have is review and discuss the proposed special town meeting articles with an anticipated vote to close the special town meeting warrant. Anticipated vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you was the special town meeting warrant. The FinCom wrapped up their review for all of the articles on Tuesday. All of the financial articles have been recommended by the Finance Committee. There's been a few additional articles that were added prior to, that were added after you guys had reviewed, not, you know, the Finance Committee has reviewed all of them, but you saw a draft of the special town meeting warrant a few weeks ago. And so there was a few little additions, and they were recommended by the Finance Committee. And there's a proposal in front of you for thirteen articles.
Do we have to vote today?
Yes.
Yep.
So, if you wanna go through the articles and make sure that you're okay with them, and then if the board is comfortable with the warrant as it stands, I would ask that you would entertain a motion to close the warrant tonight.
What do you guys say?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you go through each one of them, and we just say if we're good with it, we can move on, if not.
Read one by one?
Yep. You don't need to read the article, they are posted or they will be. All we have to do is review them, but go by one by one. Article one, and then, and if we're all good, we just check it off.
Okay, so let's, let's do this all together. Article one?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good. Article two?
Yep, good.
Yep.
I'm good. Article three?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep.
Good. Article four?
I'm good.
Yep, I'm good.
Good. Article five?
Yep, I'm good.
Yep.
We're good? What happened to six?
Yeah, we're six.
Didn't it print it right?
I don't know. There's no six.
Nope.
Maybe I.
It is supposed to be eight missing, because six, eight, seven. Oh, seven.
Yeah, the bottoms of them all. It is fourteen articles?
Should be thirteen.
Okay, it's thirteen.
We're missing number six.
All right, number six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,851.49 to fund the snow and ice deficit or take any action relative thereto.
I'm good.
I'm good. You good, Rich?
Yep.
Article number seven?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
Good. Article number eight?
Yep, I'm good.
We're good. Article number nine?
Yep.
Yep. Yes.
I'm good.
Article number ten?
What is?
What's the information?
What is this for? It's, who's, who's the it in final fiscal year invoice?
Northeast IT.
Northeast IT.
I think that needs to be clear, because it doesn't make sense the way it's written.
Okay, I can add northeast IT into that.
So maybe it was like for IT?
Northeast IT.
So we're gonna change that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
If you add northeast IT, I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too.
It just doesn't say it's for.
Yep, then I'm good with it.
Okay. Article eleven?
Might wanna do the same thing here.
Well, assess police, SBA tower lease. Just take the it's out for final fiscal year lease payment.
For the, for the final fiscal year lease payment.
For its final lease payment?
But the, instead of it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, yeah.
I'm good with correction.
I'm good with it, just.
Yep.
Correct the wording.
Me too.
Same thing with article twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve's okay.
Twelve's okay. Article thirteen?
Yeah, yep.
We're good?
Yep, I'm good.
David's good, Rich is good.
I'm good.
That's it?
So now we make a more, a more. A motion to approve this?
A motion to approve all the articles as presented, amended with the corrections that you made, and then a motion to close the warrant, special town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to accept all the articles as amended.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye.
And I'll make a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bailey's aye. So, our articles are?
All set.
All set, with the corrections.
Yep.
Good.
So you're gonna change the, here you have?
Yeah, I'll change that, yeah.
Oh, the titles on everyone?
The signature page, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Next we have the acknowledgement of the resignation of Jonathan Dusty as the Senior Center Launch Coordinator, effective June first, 2024. So, we got a letter from Mr. Dusty? Should I read the letter?
Probably don't have to.
All you gotta do is acknowledge, we acknowledged it.
Yep.
We don't have to vote, we just acknowledge, so.
No.
So we are.
Thank him for his service.
Deedop, Jonathan Dusty, we really thank you for your service, and I hope everything is good. And we're gonna miss you for sure. Next, we have review and discuss updates to the Senior Center Launch Coordinator job description. Anticipated vote. So we have a job description for the Senior Center? Do we have to discuss on this, or just?
So, the Senior Center Director informed me that the current job description needed to have some updates to it. She proposed some of these updates. I added in a little bit of some suggestions as well, which were agreeable. And this is the position updated before the, before the board.
This is for the one Mr. Dusty's leaving, right?
Correct, so we can post it, yeah.
You saw it, you had it, and you.
Right.
And.
I think it. Looks good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think fifty pounds is a lot, isn't it?
That's what Sharon said, so, I mean, that's what she wanted, fifty pounds, yeah.
So you gotta look at boxes, cans, cans, you know, boxes, cans.
Tomatoes, potatoes, yeah.
Big turkey at Thanksgiving.
That looks good to me.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I do wanna say, you know, Jonathan was a big help down there, okay? And, you know, all the reports that I've gotten when I went down there, that everybody loved the food. And so everybody's gonna miss the food, so, you know, this is gonna be a tough position to fill, moving forward. You know, because it is only thirty hours a week. And, you know, it's a challenging position, and we're gonna have to try to find somebody who has a knack, like Jonathan had, for a passion for cooking, and also a knack to working with seniors. And so those are two common denominators that we're gonna have to try to, you know, look to get.
Yep.
Well, hopefully we find somebody, if not as good, good enough.
Do we need a motion to, we need a motion to accept?
Approve the updated.
We need a motion to.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the updates to the Senior Center Launch Coordinator job description.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bailey's aye. So it's approved, the description. Hopefully we get.
We'll get it out there and posted, you know.
That'd be great. Number eight, continue discussion and possible vote on the implementation of the bi-weekly payroll for all town employees. Anticipated vote. So, we've been discussing this for a while now, I think it saves money for the town? Do we need to discuss anymore? Do we have any cons or anything?
Well, I mean, obviously, the challenge is gonna be the adjustment for employees. And so, you know, the proposal that's before you is one that we talked about in, not only at the Board of Selectment level meetings, but we also mentioned it, I also mentioned it in our department head meetings, in our staff meetings, you know, that, you know, there was a discussion of this. When this was originally brought to our attention as a, as a best practice, when the Department of Local Services came out to do their financial management review last year, you know, I started the discussion immediately with, you know, staff and people, and obviously the board, as something that, you know, not only is it gonna save money, but it's also going to, you know, free up some staff. And we don't have a lot of staff here for all of the services that we provide. So we try to provide as much services as we can to the residents with very limited staff. So, our goal here is to help with saving some costs, with freeing up some staff time, with simplifying reconciliations, you know, that process. There's a memo here from the treasurer stating that, you know, when she checked with Harper's, you know, the annual savings estimated for the town is $3,564.32 per year. But that doesn't also, you know, equate to what you would potentially be saving for staff time.
Yeah, it's exponential, because now we have hands-on for something else.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Can we vote for that?
Yeah, and in this recommendation, it also says that at least ninety days that will be given to employees notice prior to implementation.
So they start today?
No, 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 no. So, what will happen is that if this was to get approved tonight, we will work with our finance team to get the implementation done. You know, we'll iron out all the quirks and make sure we have everything ready to go, and we'll lock in, you know, a date and time ninety days out, and then we'll notify people prior to those ninety days that this is coming.
So ninety days plus, some days?
Plus, yeah.
I think it's normal. It's good for our staff, and it's good.
It has, it's, you know, I looked at the patrolman's collective bargaining agreement. It clearly states in the collective bargaining agreement that as long as all other town departments do participate in it, then they would participate in it as well. It wouldn't be a bargaining issue.
Well, good. So, can we just start the process? Can we even have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, what are we gonna do, to implement bi-weekly payroll?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bailey's aye. Some passes.
There's a resolution there that just needs some, some signatures there.
Make sure you sign it on the right line.
My signature's better now that I'm clerk. It improved quite a bit.
Your chair.
Now I'm gonna have to add one dot to my signature.
Yeah, do an extra dot.
Thank you, sir. We should make sure this.
We're good?
Thanks.
Next, we have to review a proposal from the Levy Compliance Committee for a floodgate inspection. Fact finding at the town levy, anticipated vote. Jimmy, is that you?
So, the Levy Compliance Committee has had a couple meetings. And they are charged with looking at compliance issues that are, have been identified by the Army Corps of Engineers. And one of them is to kinda get an idea where the floodgates, how they're working, how they're operable, you know, if they're operable, inspect them, provide, you know, their findings, assess them, take pictures, and to investigate each of the four floodgates. RH White Company is a company that has some experience with dealing with levies in other communities. They are relatively local, they're in Auburn, Mass. And they put a proposal together for the Levy Committee to consider. The proposal is just to do that, to do the investigation for each of the four floodgates, inspect the four floodgates, provide pictures of the gate conditions, report findings to the town representatives. They're gonna be out here for a day, possibly two, to do this work. And the proposed cost of this is $5,560. As you are aware, we were able to put aside $25,000 to fund maintenance and to the levy, and for service of the levy. So, they are bringing this request forward to the Board of Selectment to start using some of that money to address this issue.
Yeah, I think we should move fast on this and get everything done, because the levy, it's our responsibility now, so.
Yeah, I'm happy this is being done.
Yeah.
It's very good. Been too long.
I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
When you say the floodgates, are you talking about the valves, or are you talking about the actual gates?
Well, I think it would be all of that.
Okay.
Jimmy?
In building along the river, there's two buildings. There's four of these towers.
There are the valves then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're basically like a.
Right.
Gate valve.
The gate valve.
And basically, we don't know exactly what condition they are in. So this will give us that.
I wasn't sure if it was that, or if it was the big gate out by the river.
There's smaller version of that, it's inside a pipe.
Right.
And operated by a screw.
Right.
So, the problem right now is, we don't know whether the screw is still connected or whether it will be a gate, or if it's an open or closed position.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we are all thinking the same thing.
It's kind of like that.
The interior, the actual screws inside the building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta do this. There's no question. There's no, no question about it, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, you wanna make a motion to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, where are we again here? Motion to approve the proposal for the levy compliance committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion passes, so let's get this done quickly. You know, it, it may open a can of worms, but we need to know.
Yeah, this is where we need to start.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you very much for doing that. And also, we have the money to, to pay for it.
So, there's just an acceptance form if you wanna sign the acceptance.
There is?
Yeah, it's at the second page. It says the proposal accepted by.
Oh, right there at the very bottom. There wasn't a line.
I signed it?
Yeah.
Oh, just, yeah.
Here?
Right where your thumb is, no down.
Here? Okay. After nine is a dot discussion on the offer from the construction union to provide free labor for projects in town. Anticipated vote.
This, David, this is what you brought up last time? The contractors union wanted to. And you said to put it on so that you could talk about what we thought we wanted them to do?
All the little projects that we can do.
Yes. Again, that was, I thought we talked about last week, but, um.
But we couldn't.
Wasn't like comments and concerns or correspondence or something?
It was a correspondence, so we couldn't really discuss it, so.
So, again, they, they're looking for projects to do and if we have a project for them to do, we can identify it, we can take pictures of it and they can go out and design it too and give us a report of what it would cost for materials and we just gotta pay for the materials. And they would provide the labor, build, build the whole thing for us. And it's helping them because it's helping with their, their apprentice programs and helps us because we had something built that, you know, just cost us for the materials. And we would have to identify where we could get the money from for source source. If we could use building maintenance funding for something like that, if we have any left or we'd have to have a funding source to put towards that. But it sounds like a good idea. They're looking for projects. I know they're doing projects all around. They typically do like park benches, like buddy benches for the schools, picnic tables. It's day projects that they typically do. What they could easily do, I talked to one of the organizers and he said they could do the message boards. They would go out there and take the measurements and do a design of it and everything and just tell us what they need.
Did you guys mention there was one in West Ward, it was broken at the scene?
It's fallen down. And there's one in the center of town too.
By the fire station, right? Or?
By the library.
By the, by the lib, by the library.
That, that one's fallen down.
So, what if, who is the contact?
Yeah, there's a little board over there, the message board.
Who is the contact, you're the contact?
I can be the contact.
Why don't we start with those two and see what, you know, to see what they say, what they, you know, and get it going? I think it's a good, really good thing.
And they come up with the price and what it would cost us for the materials. And then we just pay for that. The other thing that we might wanna look at is, and I haven't talked to them about this, but doing the historical section upstairs, they can redo the cabinets up there. So, instead of having those sliding cubbies, we could redesign those to be able to put shelving units in and, you know, like glass doors so people can view inside there. And we could open that up to, say, Sylvia Buck. She could put historical items in there to be able to present them instead of just having them in a box somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's great. So, why, let's vote and we could start with those two projects and let them see what they say, you know, because one is inside, it could be for a rainy day, the other one is outside and, and, you know.
Well, that one's gonna take more than a day for sure.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but, but, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, they may.
They could break it up into multiple projects too. If they didn't, took more than a day, they would come back, they would start it, come back and.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the same person leading them. You may have different workers each day, but you're still doing the same project.
So, let's present those two, the inside and the outside and.
Okay.
See what they say.
We did.
Do we have to vote? It says anticipated vote.
So, we're voting for this?
We can vote for it. Really doesn't matter. It's just a, a discussion, we don't really have to vote until money is being.
Yeah.
Done.
Yeah, so, no, no vote needed.
But we could have them look at it, we're just getting an estimate.
Yeah, yeah. Get the ball rolling.
Right.
Warrants and bills.
Nope.
Okay, I just wanna make sure when you say the message board, we have several different types of message board. We have one that you put the letters on it, okay? The one by the fire department that's falling into the river.
Yep.
And then we have the one in West Warren. But we also have where we put the warrants outside of the senior center and that one is rusted, it leaks, it's mess.
But that one's a metal one, right?
Mm-mm, it's wood.
We could look at them all.
The lock is rusted.
Oh, okay.
And the latch is rusted and it opens really weird. It opens down.
Oh, so the water gets in.
So, the water, and it's not closed at all. It, it's, so it's, it's ridiculous, so those.
So, we could look at all three of them, maybe even if they break it up into one project each time.
I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same board.
About the boards.
About the boards.
There's also one by the old town hall too.
Yeah, there's one there too.
That one's okay. I, I do that one.
Okay.
And that one is.
But that's against the building, that's on the building.
No, I do the one that's sitting out in the middle of the walkway by the old town hall. There's a freestanding one.
Next amazing.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one that I do. The lock is a little screwy, but other than that, it's fine.
Sounds good. Warrants and bills.
Am I reading these or are you?
I, I can read them, I have no problem with it.
All right.
All right. All right, for warrants, number seventy-three, payroll forty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Warrant seventy-three A, payroll three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. And warrant number seventy-four, vendor thirty-five thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David, I was gonna vote again. I'm not used to this.
I know.
It's weird.
I'm trying to adjust. Yes, it's, forgive us, we're, we're not experts.
All right, so now bills, right?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to pay the following bills. Civic Plus, three thousand five dollars and thirty-four cents. Weston and Sampson, eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. WB Mason, hundred and forty dollars, seventy-four cents. KP Law, one thousand six, well, one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Modern Pest, a hundred and eight dollars. C Two Mass Abrams, two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-one cents. National Grid, one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Comcast Business, one hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. Verizon, seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Buffoon Cleaning Services, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. SBA Structures LLC, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Hamden Communication Corp., one thou, fifteen hundred dollars. And Masco, three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
David Dufrain?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Bills pass.
There's one more.
Yeah, one more. And I make a motion to pay Rich I Hocker for a reimbursement for a hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Now, you get a second.
Second. All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker abstains.
You abstain. This is for the Zoom, right?
No, no.
It's for a plaque?
Oh, got it. Now, we have the minutes, review and possible acceptance of any minutes anticipated vote.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty-four. Sorry.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
David Dufrain, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. I think we should have kept our seats, you know.
We'll get it together.
It's gonna take some time. Okay, so now, we have the town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple of things I'd like to report back to the board on since our last meeting. I, I am pleased to report that the Board of Assessors passed modulars zero and four for their classifying property, real and personal property. That is a requirement for members of the board to, to take those courses and to pass. And so, when we were without a board, the town became unqualified to classify property and that could impact us when we go to set the tax rate. So, we were able to work with our new board members and our new board members quickly took the courses on DLS Gateway, passed modular zero and four, which took the town out of the status of unqualified to now qualified to classify property. So, that's a, a very good positive step for the, for a very new board in a, in a very short period of time. So, kudos to them. We are gonna continue to work on completing the whole modular of one oh one between now and next year. They have one year from their time of the election to complete the entire one oh one modular. They are working diligently to do that and some other modulators have already been also completed by some of the board members as well. So, that's, they have a whole year to complete that. So, we've already completed the, the, the critical piece first. We're working on, on the second piece for that throughout the year. I will want to notify the public that we are still in a transitional period within the office and so, for, for, for just to exercise some patience with us. We are looking, I'm working with the Board of Assessors to get the, the office staffed up, ramped up and we do have interviews scheduled for next week for the assistant assessor position. The board is gonna be doing some interviews individually with me as well as looking at some other mod, models that we may be bringing before for the kind of unique approach to, to get some experience in there that we're working on with the board. The finance committee met, as I reported earlier, this past Tuesday, passed all of the financial articles for this special town meeting with their stamps of approval. They, the finance committee is, is potentially meeting again the end of June and right before the cutoff for line item transfers mid-July. So, I don't have the exact dates off, offhand, but that will be posted and that will be circulated throughout all the departments in case there's a need, a critical need for a line item transfer after the special town meeting. So, we've, the departments worked, have worked very well with reducing the number of requests for line item transfers. As you can see, you know, when I, when we first started this, this assignment in twenty twenty-two, there, there might have been, you know, close to forty line item transfer requests. Last year, it was down to like in the twenties. This year, it, you know, we only did two and we were able to get some of the other ones addressed at the special like we've, like we have. So, there's two requests that are gonna be coming before the board in its early June meeting. One is from the fire department and the other one is from the building department. So, we, we are gonna have those on for the meeting in, the first meeting in June. Working with the sewer commissioners, I attended the sewer commissioners' meeting this week. They also met around the same time as the FinCom meeting. I, I, I really hate when that happens. So, we were able to, to work with the sewer commissioners. They, they had a public meeting, a public hearing on, on, on their potential rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. They've continued their public hearing until the first Tuesday, I believe in June. Was it June fourth? Yes, June fourth is the continuation of the public hearing that just happened on the twenty-first. Again, it's important to, to put out that feedback for potential rates and, and potential suggestions. Right now, we're, 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 it's in a critical stage, the rate has to be set. So, you know, there was some great discussion at the, at the meeting brought up by some residents on, on how we could maybe look to ways to modify how we bill and our approach to billing for sewer and I think they're very warranted for further discussion. But that's gonna take a, a bigger time period to, to get those ideas flushed out. So, we're, we're working with sewer commissioners to get their rates set for fiscal year twenty-five and to have them continue this discussion throughout the course of the year for, for looking at maybe other ways to come about addressing the rate for all of the users, the sewer users. I wanna update the board on the lieutenant search interviews. We had last week, myself, our police chief, our fire chief and the chief from Westbrook Field. We had interviews for potential candidates to fill the position for lieutenant. The interviews went very well. I, I, we, we brought someone back for a second look and we're currently working, I'm working with the chief of police, Jerry Millet, on, on trying to get an idea of, of what, where we stand with possibly negotiating a contract with the lieutenant and hopefully being able to bring this, this person and, you know, a, a draft contract for consideration to an executive session very soon. But the process has, has, has played out well and I think, I think you're going to be receptive to the candidate that, that we are bringing forward. I think you're gonna, you really have a, a good feel about that. We had a pre-construction meeting. I had a pre-construction meeting yesterday with Weston and Sampson, with Chris Dumphy, with John O'Leary, the new gentleman from CMR PC and with A. Martins and Sons Construction, who was the successful bidder for the, the phase two of the school street, Otis Street Improvement Project. That pre-construction meeting went very well. They had brought documents looking to get signatures, you know, you know, from the board. Unfortunately, you know, we, we, you know, the meeting was already scheduled. Our meeting was already posted, so we couldn't get those documents on for tonight. So, it was well, it was within the time period for tomorrow's quick meeting that we're gonna have. So, I asked Karen to add it to the agenda for tomorrow so that the documents can get signed. The construction, A. Martins and Sons wants to start. The construction, um, A. Martins and Sons, uh, wants to start, um, would like to start construction as early, um, or pre-planning construction as early as next week on, on Tuesday. They are going to go out and notify, um, the residents. CMRPC and, and, uh, John and Chris have, have made a commitment to go out and notify the residents of School Street, Prospect Street, Richardson Street, Otis Street, that neighborhood, that, um, you know, there's gonna be some, you know, some construction starting, uh, relatively soon. And we'll continue on throughout the, the summer months. So, they're gonna go flyer the, um, the neighborhood tomorrow. Uh, we had a call today. We went over the flyer, uh, the, 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 um, the, um, any concerns or anything are gonna call the Board of Selectmen's Office. Um, eh, sorry, Karen. Uh, they're gonna call the Board, Board of Selectmen's Office. Karen will, um, will, uh, compile all the concerns and, and, and bring them to me, uh, that need to be addressed, and I'll bring them to the board. Um, so that flow has already been established, um, and, um, all of the, um, uh, notices are gonna be hand-delivered going to the neighborhoods, if any concerns or anything like that. Um, so we, we're moving along in that direction. Uh, again, uh, as the auditor had indicated, cybersecurity, uh, is paramount. Um, I went through our, um, our list, uh, that we get from Northeast IT on trainings, um, every month to see who has participated in trainings and who has not participated in trainings. Um, anybody who has a town email account is required to participate in trainings. And so, uh, I've sent out friendly reminders to everybody.
Yeah, I got one.
I got one too.
Me too.
I, I send.
Me too, although I don't need it.
I send out friendly, I sent out friendly reminders, email reminders, to seeing if we can get our, um, our participation rate up for next month. Um, I saw it dip from, uh, April to, from April to, uh, from March to April, and I wanted to send out those, um, notices to, to all of you, to the, um, users that, um, you know, could do some more trainings. Um, phones, phones are going to be, uh, installed, um, starting, well, they're gonna be delivered on, uh, June seventeenth. Uh, they will be ported over on, uh, June twenty-first, um, and then they'll be, you know, ready to go, um, you know, when, when people return back to work on that Monday. So, all of that has, you know, all of that stuff has been, uh, processed. Uh, the order has, has, has been submitted. Um, the, uh, recordings of the, of the, um, voice, uh, messaging will take place when it gets a little bit closer to, um, to the, uh, to the delivery date. That can be done over the, um, over the, um, the computer. Um, anyway, I think we're ready to go with that.
There is a training on the nineteenth.
And there's a training on the nineteenth, um, that, um, that will be circulated out for all of the users.
June?
June nineteenth, yep. So, uh, we'll send out an email, um, letting staff know of the, of the trainings, um, that are gonna be, uh, going on. Um, I did also, uh, speaking of trainings, I did also, uh, send out a, a, a memo, an email about, uh, open meeting law trainings that, um, that are available from the Attorney General's Office. There's a couple of dates in June and July that you can participate, uh, in a webinar. Um, and I, I've made recommendations that if staff have some availability and you, especially if you work for a board, um, to participate, to learn, uh, about the open meeting law. Uh, I've sent that out to everybody, um, and, uh, you know, I encourage everybody to participate. Uh, we do have quite a few different events coming up, uh, for next week and, and into June next week. Uh, I do have a, uh, a, a meeting with Chris Dumphy, John O'Leary, uh, as well as, um, Nathan Delude from the state. They're coming in, uh, the state's, uh, has, has agreed to come in, uh, to talk about potential, uh, uses of some, uh, CDBG funds that we may not have the need for, uh, in the Otis Street, uh, School Street Phase Two, um, project, that there may be some, uh, some, um, because the bits came back lower than anticipated, there may be some, um, additional funds available, seeing if we could potentially repurpose those funds for a, um, uh, you know, a potential acquisition of a train station or, uh, potential other, uh, improvements at our senior center. We're gonna have a, a preliminary discussion next week, um, with the state to see if they, they have an appetite for it, um, as a, as a possible source. Um, we also have a workshop that is planned for next Wednesday, uh, from five to seven thirty down at the senior center. It's a very important workshop, uh, for, um, our new, an updated master plan, community plan. We encourage all of the residents, uh, of the community to come down to the senior center next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, um, from five to, to seven thirty. Um, it's critically important. On Thursday, uh, May thirtieth, I do have an appointment with Melissa Cryon, who is the Executive Director of the Park Grant that the town was a recipient of at Lucy Stone Park. The Lucy Stone Park project is now finished, um, and, uh, we are going to be ready to close out the grant. Um, and she's coming to do a final inspection. So, at ten thirty on Thursday, the thirtieth, she is available and I'm gonna be meeting her at Lu- Lucy Stone to show her the beautiful work, uh, that has been done, uh, on, on the, um, on the, uh, plants, um, you know, and the interpretation garden, uh, that assigned, interpretation garden that was installed there. Uh, really great stuff. Um, so, we have a, a lot of things coming and a lot of things, uh, moving, uh, between now and, uh, the ATM and the, uh, STM, uh, which is gonna be on, uh, Thursday, uh, June thirteenth. Uh, so, we encourage all the residents to participate, uh, at the special and at the annual, starting at six thirty.
Well, I, I think it's a big blessing that our administrator report comes with all good news from excellent boards trying to learn more stuff, all the way to Lucy Stone, beautiful park. You know, it's, everything's positive. I think we're moving forward and I think it's a thank you to these two guys. You know, even we, we switch places, that doesn't mean anybody is above anybody else. We are, we're all the same, we're all equal, just sit between these two excellent guys over here. And I, definitely, our, our biggest blessing is our county administrator, our secretary, and all the boards that help us together.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business? Do you have any new business?
I don't know. Um, did you, Mr. Prior, were you gonna talk about the bells? Is that going through?
Um, I, they haven't come back yet, no. That, that, that committee was still meeting on that.
Okay. Do you want to add something else?
Um, what about the results of the executive session?
Results of which executive session?
That we just had earlier today.
You get a post for the, um, secretary position.
We have an opening, right?
Okay, okay, yeah.
Right, we can talk about that.
But no, no, I, I, I wouldn't, you know, I mean, we, we'll be posting for that position.
Yeah, okay.
We'll post for it immediately.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have an opening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any old business?
No. Could always bring up railroad ties. Anybody? No idea?
I wanna see the lines.
No dates on them.
I wanna, I wanna see the lines painted on the road. I'll talk to Jeremy. Beg him. Especially with all that rain. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes.
We do.
Open Meeting Law One.
So, from the state to Patrick Higgins, it said, please see the attached. What was that?
What's the attached?
That was the letter that Mr. Prior sent out?
Is it?
So, it was a response?
So, it was the board's, yeah, so I, uh, I responded on behalf of the board, uh, for the, uh, potential open meeting law violation. Um, and Mr. Higgins, uh, also responded, uh, to the response and said that he was satisfied with the remedial actions taken by, uh, the town of Warren and no further review is needed nor requested. And the Attorney General's Office also indicated that, uh, that they've received it and moved on.
It's all good. Okay.
Very good, thank you. So, now we move into comments and concerns. We have any comments or concerns?
David? No. Congratulations. Um, whatever, no? It's been quiet. It was nice half the week off.
Hmm, yeah. I had a chance to, really, I had a lot to do. I, I, I was able to do a lot that Thursday.
Hmm.
All my family thought, what are you doing here? But it was good, a good break.
Okay, I don't have anything.
No? Jimmy?
No.
No? Anybody in the public, you have any comments or concerns? Ray?
Yeah, hi, Ray, Echo, Warren resident. Uh, just a comment, uh, I appreciate the board addressing the reorganization. Uh, I think it's important, uh, not to be contrary to what the chair said just a moment ago about being all equal. You are a first among equals and you do have, by nature of the chair, more power because you, you control the narrative of the meetings. You influence the agenda more so than the other members, uh, not necessarily or anything like that, but just the nature of the position does carry a lot of responsibility. It's important for the chair and the other positions too, not just with the select board, but with all boards and all committees that are organized to be representative, to have rotations with their leadership. Uh, it's, it's, it's inappropriate, in my opinion, for any one person within their three-year term to hold the chair for more than two of those three terms. While the board, while this board, of course, doesn't have any obligation to reorganize, I think it's just, it's best practice, a cursory review of numerous towns throughout the Commonwealth have as a policy that each year after, uh, coinciding with annual elections, that there be a rotation among the chair and the other, uh, offices held by the board. Uh, the Massachusetts Selectmen Association itself, for their own representation, they're not a select board, they're an, an association of, of select men, but their bylaws actually says that, uh, for its own governance, that officers serve for a one-year term and then it is rotated amongst, uh, it's a, it's a different situation. I understand that, but if I, if the, if the, uh, association itself recommends a one-year term for the officers with rotation, I think it would do, uh, that, that says something about the importance of rotating offices. Uh, and so, I just wanna express my appreciation that the board, uh, not only did it, but at least addressed it, and, uh, that, that's good. I thought I had one other comment, I can't recall it right now. So, we did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We, we, we feel fortunate to be surrounded of so many good people around here that, you know, it's a good thing. Um, I, I also believe it's a good thing to, you know, be rotating the boards and maybe we, not because of us, but for future generations, make a policy, you know, so at least we, we don't end up on like this thing like, you know, you have the big, the shortest thing, you know, you know, throw the coin on.
Just, just one.
Yes, go ahead.
To, to address that point, it's not a personal thing. It's, but inevitably, if you sit in the chair, you, you're, because you're controlling the narrative, and, 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 maybe without malice, I'm not saying that there's any malice or ill intent or anything like that, but just the nature of the fact that you hold the chair for more than a year, or, 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 in some cases, more than two years, or in some cases, almost three years, uh, uh, anyone individual's biases and prejudices and, and just proclivities are gonna tend to come to the surface. And the only way to prevent that is to voluntarily step out of the role, let someone else do it. There was one other aspect to it too. Some of the towns, uh, that I wanna research this slightly was that they recommend, I'm not quite sure the rationale, I didn't have time to really pursue it, but they recommend that the chair not be held by a, a, a board member that is in their last term, in, in the last year of their term. So, I don't mean to.
We're not perfect.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure, and I believe the rationale is simply, because you end up potentially, if there were malice by such a person, they're in their last year, they can be on my duck, they, they may not care, they may not fulfill their responsibilities with integrity, et cetera. I think that's the rationale. I'm not speaking it, it's just a, one other point. If you guys were to consider establishing policies and.
I think it's a good point.
I'd do that.
It's a valid point, you know.
That, that was mentioned by several towns in, in their, their select board prop, policies.
So, the only thing is a newly elected person to this board getting thrown to be chairman? I don't know that that's such a good idea though.
That, that would, doesn't work either.
So, that, you know, maybe you do the second-year person or something, but just, you know.
There's different strategies. Uh, some, some have a, a recommended, um, uh, 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 a, a protocol that if someone's the, the, the chair, the next year, by default, but not imposed, the, uh, the vice chair would then move up, be chair, they, 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 there'd be a true rotation. You'll, you'll have to have, the most important thing is that it get addressed and everyone go on record as to why or why not you're gonna reorganize. That's, that's the biggest reason. There may be a very good reason to keep, maintain a, a, a board. Uh, but it, it, it's my understanding that you guys kept the same board for the last three years and it's, it, I'm just glad that you addressed it and have reorganized again. Now, nothing personal against anyone, it's just a good practice, it's just a good practice.
Technically, it was two years.
What'd you mean?
Two years.
Uh, well, I, I know Dave was chair for the last three years, so you guys might, you guys, you guys might have.
Came on board, it was.
You might have flipped back and forth, but anyway.
No, that's okay. You know, you know, I agree with you, a lot of the things that you're saying, um, it makes a lot of sense. It protects the town, it protects the, the board, you know.
It's just good practice.
Here, we are, you know, three guys that wanna do everything for Warren and, you know, it, we'll do anything for a better place to live, so.
Right.
But, you know, you never know who's gonna come after us.
Yeah, that's what I say, it's, 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 it's not a personal thing, it's just a prac, a good practice thing and help.
So, what if we put it on, on, on the agenda for next time, just to talk about, you know, creating a policy or something?
Sure.
Just to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else in, here in the public? Jimmy?
Uh, one thing I just wanna mention, the, uh, town hall bells, John, stopped working. I don't know exactly what happened to it. He reset the time on it, thought it would start up like this, something that deactivated it or, oh, I think it goes.
Take a look at it tomorrow?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just give you guys a chance if you wanna look at it, you won't be worried.
Yeah, but you know what time you wanna be?
We do it after I get it tomorrow.
I still do, uh, we still do the winding twice a week. And probably next, uh, probably tomorrow, I should have changed the lights, red, white door for the holiday. Be a little bit more than I think, right?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Joe Conrad, resident. I've been repeatedly asked in the last couple of weeks about the, uh, town clerk not printing out for us deaths and marriages in the town report. I tried to look. I tried to look for a roundabout solution. And I found other potential problems. There are ways to do this, and sometimes you gotta pick outside the box. I realize that there may have been a problem that a solution was not found. But asking surrounding town clerks what they do, and just not printing it, creates a bigger problem. There's a lot of veterans who died, and now we're burying Vietnam veterans. In my life, I've only had to spoil one veteran's coffin flag. I hope to never do it again. It takes a lot out of the people doing that job by the officer who has to present it to a child. When it comes to births, parents and grandparents like to see their kid's name. When it comes to a marriage, parents love to see their kids getting married. But when it comes to a death record, that is something that they keep. Yes, you can go all the way to Dorchester, and a list of every person in the state that's died. But it's not the same as just getting the town report and saving it. And I listed two problems there. Problem one, problem two then. If it goes out to the internet, you don't know who's looking at that. And it can create other problems, because once they got a name, they can use two search engines, I listed near the bottom, to find everything about basically every person in this room. Just a thought. But it's something now that you know and have to think about. Maybe make minor changes somehow.
Do you have any? I'm trying to think about it, but.
Well, I can tell you right now, town clerk is an elected position, and she made that decision. And she did that because, to protect people's privacy. Because although reporting it is nice, and it's great for small towns, and people do like to see it, it does pose, pose a risk to their personal identities. So that's why the town clerk took it out of there. And ultimately, it is the town clerk's decision whether she's gonna put it in there or not.
A big source of fraud and identity, identity theft is deaths. When someone dies, it's a great opportunity to grab their information and start creating a false identity, so.
Also, I talked to Lori about this today, Lori. And she said that she talked to another town clerk that went to a meeting about all town clerks. And basically, the state said that it is not the best practice to put names and dates in the annual reports.
I think it's safer. I, I would say, Mr. Conrad, I really respect the passion that you have and the caring that you do have about this, and it touches me. And I understand, but sometimes we do have to change things to protect people, because we are in an age where even a little bit of information, the wrong person can take that and do very bad things with it now. And yes, there are other resources, but we also have to limit our exposure to that too, and try to do the best we can to protect our residents. It's gonna get out there somehow, but we can at least not be one of the sources that somebody uses to do it with, so.
Yeah, I, you know, me personally, I, I'm, I'm online all the time. And the internet can be really good, but can also be really bad. And remember, the most important thing, don't throw your information out. You know, that's, just think about it. They, people out there trying to get your money, one way or the other one. So I, I respect you a lot. Like David said, you, you touched our hearts, we, we-
Well, it's just that there are certain things that PDFs that were posted that I would tell.
Well, at least it's a PDF, which has a little bit of degree of more safety than a document or text. But still, it's-
It's still not, not working down, or again?
Yes, sir. Things to consider. Anything else, sir? Anybody else? Do we have anybody in Zoom land?
Doesn't appear. Nope.
We're good? Okay. I lost my agenda.
Well, our next meeting date is actually tomorrow, not Thursday.
Correct.
What's happening tomorrow?
We're taking up two issues, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At 1:30.
When is the tree hearing? Not ours, but the real, the Jeremy-
30th.
30th.
So at 1:30, we have a meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Who else? They do not know. May 30th is John Fitzgerald Kennedy's birthday.
How many years?
More than my mother's. Who used the right to?
Is that the tree hearing?
Four o'clock, isn't it?
Four o'clock on Thursday. Yes, okay.
That's next week.
Yeah, it's the one that Jeremy's doing.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
David DeFran, aye.
Richard Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. We are adjourned.